Good evening. It is seven thirty P M. On May twenty eighth, I would like to call to order the May twenty eighth meeting of the Norwalk Human Council. If you'll please join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag and remain standing after the pledge. As you know, this past weekend, we honored the men and women of our country who gave their lives serving the nation in war. We had in World War One, World War Two, Korea, Vietnam, Iraq, and Afghanistan. Over five hundred Norwalk residents gave their lives and lost their lives protecting our freedoms. We had two parades this past week, and they were well attended, and I was really honored and proud to see how many people came out to help honor those who gave their lives. So if we can remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Dixon, if you please call the rule.
Mister Burnett. Mister Goldstein.
Here.
Mister Lopez.
Present.
Mister Jilsky-Eichner.
Present.
Miss Smith.
Here.
Yes.
Miss Ayers.
Present.
Mister Seed.
Present.
Mister Wiggins.
Yeah.
Miss Young.
Here.
Miss, Miss Murray?
Oh, sorry, I'm here. I thought you said Miss Murray.
Miss McMur.
I'm here. Apologies.
Miss Dunn.
Here.
Mister Sutton.
Present.
Mister Frayer.
Yeah.
Miss Shanahan.
Here.
Thirteen, we have a forum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, acceptance of the minutes. Special meeting of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty four. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan, any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted. Opposed? Abstentions. Two abstentions, Mister Johan Lopez and Mister Josh Goldstein. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May fourteenth, two thousand twenty four. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMur, any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Ms. McMur.
Thank you, Mayor. On page eight, it refers to me as Miss McMurray. It should be McMur. I think we combined our two names. And then there was another quote that was attributed to Miss Nijolski-Eichner that reads, "We'll vote in favor this time regarding the E C D item." That was actually me that said that. Thank you.
Okay. Any further corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as corrected. Opposed? Abstentions. Mister Lopez abstains. Everybody else approves. Next, we have public participation. We have two people in the audience who are either of you wanting to address the council. James, do we have anybody online?
Yes, Lisa Henderson.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good, thank you. Good evening. Lisa Henderson, twenty one Apple Tree Lane, Norwalk. I'm speaking tonight on the change to the leaf blower ordinance, required safety feature for the use of leaf blowers. This change to the ordinance ordinance has not been communicated to the landscaper community or the public, but neither has the original ordinance, which the landscaper community was promised would happen by the ordinance committee last year. The original ordinance includes all leaf blower usage, gas leaf blower. This ordinance unfairly targets only landscaper businesses, excludes residents and homeowners. This is unjust and only targets a very specific business sector, the landscapers. The changes outlined in this ordinance found in the agenda documents eliminates OSHA-approved safety equipment. This makes absolutely no sense to me. If an employee is wearing glasses, is that considered protective eyewear? How about contacts? What constitutes hearing protection if not OSHA-approved hearing protection? If not OSHA-approved respiratory protection, then what constitutes respiratory protection? This is now overreach. Please provide the factual research, OSHA and EPA, that led you to this change of the ordinance. If you know anything about lawn care and landscaper businesses, the label is the law in this business sector. Please provide us with the OSHA regulations that detail the specific P P E for specific decibels, fumes, and eye protection. Please provide labels for the equipment that you are referencing and basing this ordinance. How many new electric leaf blowers does the city own and operate? For the original ordinance, city, state, and utility employees, actually, everybody in the city, also must adhere to this ordinance as of this month. How is this being enforced at the employee level for the city of Norwalk? What is the future cost to the city to bring the departments into compliance with the current ordinance, including building charging stations and storage of these batteries? How do you expect businesses that send employees out in the field to perform services to monitor your requirements of always wearing P P E? It's impossible.
Seconds.
Thank you. Who will be fined? The business or the employee? How do you plan to implement this ordinance? Police, blight, zoning, a new department? You are unfairly targeting a specific sector of the business. You have not done any outreach to the community, especially the landscape community in both Norwalk and outside Norwalk. Gas leaf blowers are being used on a daily basis all over Norwalk. Just one final thing. I watched the Oak Hills Park Authority meeting last week, and it was mentioned that they're going to be asking for yes, they're going to be asking for an exemption to the ordinance that is near impossible to maintain the golf course with the leaf blower ordinance. I ask that you reject this tonight and you re-review the current ordinance that you have currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tyson Canterbury.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Tyson Canterbury, thirty-four Esquire Road, and I own Signature Landscaping here in Norwalk. One point I would like to say is, why is it the landscapers all the time? Why is the construction industry not included in this? There's many industries that make dust. They make noise. But for some reason, it's the landscapers that are targeted. And second of all, it's a choice of each person. If they want to wear safety equipment, it's their choice. We already provide it for them. And if they want to wear it, let them wear it. But you're just asking us to incur even more costs now in our business. First, you're telling us to buy electric stuff. We have to outfit our building. We have to put in a burn room. We have to do this. And now you're telling us to go out and buy safety equipment. And you just keep adding these costs to us doing business. We're small businesses. We can't afford to keep adding these costs. And, you know, I'm waiting to see the city show an example. I don't see one city worker out there with an electric backpack, not one. And I know the guys from D P W and Parks. I see him out there every day. And now we're starting to get a bad reputation because everybody online treats us like we're the mafia with weapons with these backpacks. They're looking at us and frowning upon us. Social media is all over us. And what is the real reason? First, you tell us it's noise. Then you tell us it's pollution. I mean, what is the problem? You know, just come out and state what the real issue is. It's noise. People don't want to hear noise. Well, electric backpacks make plenty of noise as well. And it's just frustrating that you're asking me to make a huge investment and in something you're going to review in two years. And if it doesn't work, then what? I'm supposed to return all that stuff and go back to the gas? It just, it just bewilders me that there's so many more issues that are more pertinent. You know, like the firehouse with asbestos and mold in it. And we're worried about backpacks and safety equipment. And it still hasn't been written in Spanish. And the majority of the landscapers in Norwalk are Hispanic. It hasn't been written in Spanish. So how are they to know? You know, honestly, everybody comes to me because I'm the one that does all the bitching about it, and they ask me what the rules are because nobody really knows. So you always keep passing these rules and these laws. And I know it's a democratic, you know, majority, fourteen to one, and you vote for it. But you have to take into account, especially the poorer districts. So I ask you to really consider what it is you're voting for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people online wishing to comment, James? It will close public participation. Next on the agenda is resignations and appointments. The first appointment I have is for Mister Ron Palladino to the Police Commission. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMur.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have known Mister Palladino for quite some time now. His grandson and my son are very good friends. And I think that when you see someone in a family setting, you really get to know who they are. And I think it just speaks volumes when I see him interacting with his family and the kids that are at birthday parties and things, just what a great guy he is. In addition to that, though, I think he would make a great addition to the Police Commission because he has security systems background, I T background, morals, he volunteers for the community in various ways. And I just think he would be super objective and passionate about this role, and I appreciate him stepping up into this role. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comments or question, Ms. Shanahan?
Yes, I'd like to endorse all of the comments that my colleague, Ms. McMur, said about Mister Palladino. I know him well. He's in my district. He's a great volunteer in West Norwalk and Norwalk in general, and all of his qualifications certainly set him up very well for this job. So I'm delighted he raised his hand and hopeful that we vote him in tonight.
Further comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations. You'll reach out to the city clerk here at some point for the administration of your oath of office. Thank you. Next is Kathleen Olson on the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate. Mister Goldstein.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Kathy Olson is someone who many of us know. She has a laudable professional background and serves since twenty fourteen as the Audit Committee Chair on the Board of Directors of Green Brick Partners and has had both experience as a financial officer. But how I know her, and I think how many of us know her, is with her work at the Lockwood Matthews Mansion. She's been a trustee and volunteer for the mansion for as long as I can. And she has done really laudable work, especially given the fact that the mansion has had to pull a real auto hole, as they would say in football, given the fact that the mansion has been under renovation for a couple of years. And she and her team and Patty Bracha and everyone involved has done a wonderful job. I have no doubt that Kathy will do well on Zoning Board of Appeals, and I support her nomination for the position.
Thank you. Further comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have Jade Sylvester, Arts and Cultural Commissioner. Do I have a motion? Mister Nijolski-Eichner.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'm pleased to nominate Jade Sylvester for Arts and Cultural Commission. I think her background, both as someone who works in marketing as a professional, through a substantial number of of long-term and deep professional engagement there, but also her background as an artist herself. So she is a singer-songwriter and also has a really fascinating set of projects, gathering interviews and barnabbling stories, particularly folks, the African-American experience at her alma mater. So really, I think a great contribution of the Arts Commission will bring some really interesting background, and I'm very pleased and supportive of nomination.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Last is Diana Lankowski. I know there was an indication that she was a member of District C. Actually, she lives in District A, so I wanted to make a note of that. Do I have a motion? Mister Jilsky-Eichner.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and I am again pleased to move Diana Lankowski for planning and zoning as an alternate. Lankowski has literally decades of experience in real estate, and I think will be a tremendous asset to planning and zoning, given that background. She's also a very longtime city resident. I think a deep commitment to Norwalk, and I'm very grateful that she stepped up.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you to all who are willing to serve. I know it's very challenging to get people to serve, but I appreciate when people put names forward for me. It helps out a lot, and we seem to get some very quality people. Next, Mayor's remarks, as I just mentioned, we had two parades this past weekend, Row Eight Memorial Day Parade, Norwalk Memorial Day Parade. Yesterday was a little bit of a challenge. We were going back and forth whether or not the weather would cooperate, which it did. And we had a wonderful parade. Many people showed up in both parades, and I was really happy to see that. This year, as the grand marshal for the Norwalk Parade was Mister Rich Olson, who also serves as the commander of American Legion Post Twelve. And it was so important that we remember the men and women who gave their lives serving this country. Some gave all, all gave some, all gave some, some gave all. Next, the Enforcement Open House. Interesting meeting coming up on Thursday, May thirtieth, the day after tomorrow. The City of Norwalk invites the community to our Enforcement Open House. A lot of times, there's questions about the enforcement process in the City of Norwalk, whether it be fire inspections, whether it be code inspections. And this is an opportunity for people to come and learn about the process and learn how the different departments have different responsibilities, what those responsibilities are, and how they move forward. I think people would be actually impressed with the number of inspections, number of inspections that we actually do in the course of a year. So it's a good opportunity to come out and maybe have any questions answered that you might have. But I think it's also informative for the city, the citizens in Norwalk to know what we actually do. This Friday, May thirty first, we are raising the pride flag at City Hall. Join me, members of the Triangle Community Center, to raise the pride flag at City Hall. It's celebrated each June, Pride Month, in honor of the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising in New York City, considered by many to be the tipping point for the modern L G B T Q plus liberation movement. So in the City of Norwalk, we not only recognize our L G B T Q plus community, but we celebrate them and all the incredible contributions they make. Next Friday, June seventh, at ten thirty A M., I invite the community to come to City Hall for a proclamation ceremony to recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Gun Violence Awareness Day honors survivors and victims of gun violence and aims to spread awareness of how we can reduce gun violence in this country. We ask that showing your support to wear orange to commemorate this incident, this day. We know that gun violence is on the rise, and we need to find out any way we possibly can to work to protect people, make our communities safe. Norwalk is, we have Spring Restaurant Week coming up next week. We will take place from Monday, June third through Sunday, June ninth. Our restaurants that are participating will be offering prefixed, reduced-price meals. Come out and support our local restaurants. We always like to buy local. That's all I have, so I will now turn it over to the council president, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'm going to move on to item six, Reports, Department Boards and Commissions, A Corporation Council. Settlement, being Francesca Purgekan, file number A three seven 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 four. Someone moved that. We're going to, that's on consent.
Sorry.
It's on the consent.
On consent, okay.
All in favor? Opposed? Favor? So now, reading the consent calendar, is Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you, Councilmember Young. Seven A, Public Safety and General Government. Seven A one, authorize the Department of Public Works to have Eversource Electric to install four new poles and the associated wire for four new streetlights on the north side of Cossett Road to the intersection of Scrivener Avenue within the city right of way in accordance with the attached plan at an approximate one-time cost of ten thousand dollars to be paid for from account noted. Two, authorize the Department of Public Works to have Eversource Electric to install four new poles and the associated wire for four new streetlights on the north side of Cossett Road to the intersection of Scrivener Avenue within the city right of way in accordance with the attached plan at an approximate cost of a hundred dollars per month to be paid for from account number noted. Three, authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a contract with First Duty Fire Department Records Management Service for a total not to exceed forty thousand, forty dollars, account noted. Four, authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to accept grant funding under the Department of Justice, the Justice Education Center, Inc., F Y twenty twenty, F Y twenty-two, Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant. Five, authorize Chief of Police James Walsh to execute any and all documents and agreements as may be necessary to implement the Department of Justice, the Justice Education Center, Inc., F Y twenty-two, Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant. Seven A, seven B, Finance and Claims. One, approve and accept, except, except and approve the report of the Claims Committee dated May twenty twenty four. Two, for informational purposes only, narrative on tax collection data made before. Three, for informational purposes only, monthly tax collectors' reports dated April twenty twenty four. Four, approve F Y twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Water Pollution Authority budget. Five, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into an agreement with the Norwalk Housing Authority, Sound Communities, Inc., and S C Meadow, L L C, for the abatement of real property taxes pursuant to C G S Section eight dash two one five and Norwalk Code fifty-one dash one at a rate of five percent of the aggregate rents collected with respect to the Meadow Gardens Affordable Housing Development, excluding any rental assistance subsidies and reduced by direct cost of utilities and trash payments paid by the developer for such fiscal year for the following term. I, sixteen, sixteen, sixteen years from the date of completion of the project is reflected by the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy or temporary certificate of occupancy to the last unit in Project Four, eighteen years from the date when all parties have signed the agreement, whichever shall occur first. Seven C, ordinance committee. Two, approve provisions to Chapter nine, Article nine, Section nine dash twenty-seven, the Reapportionment Advisory Committee Appointment Date twenty twenty four Transition Provision. And that, mercy. At seven fifty-two, yeah, at the end of the content.
Good job.
Thank you.
We've all heard that dramatic reading by Council.
It's no, it's no humor, but.
A try. Yeah. Heard the council, the consent calendar is read by Councilmember Goldstein. All in favor? Opposed, abstent?
Thank you, Miss Young. So the item that's not on consent, item seven C one, Ms. Shanahan.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'd like to move, approve, I guess it would be C, one, approve revisions to Chapter sixty-one A Leaf Blower Section four Required Safety Features of the Use of Leaf Blowers. Am I speak to it for a moment, Your Honor? Thank you, Your Honor. I know I'm still being a lawyer. Sorry. The honorable, the honorable. Thank you. So what we're doing today is, at the request of the D P W, we wanted to look at what the safety features ought to be for gas leaf blowers. And we looked at OSHA, but OSHA didn't really particularly deal with the specificity that D P W asked. So what they thought would be the best move for this would be to look at the manufacturer recommended and rated personal protective equipment in accordance with industry standards for each of the machines that one uses, which is easily attainable with the catalog that comes with each of the machines. So we thought that that would be the best way to actually describe what required safety features ought to be used for whatever gas leaf blower is being used. So that, this is a small technical correction to the leaf blower ordinance that we passed last year. At this time, manufacturers only recommend eye and hearing protection. They don't at this time request, require respiratory protection. In some ways, this new ordinance is, or this revision to the ordinance is actually less prohibitive than the one we had originally written. Just to say, one other thing, at this time, to clear up a little bit of the confusion from some of our commentators, gas leaf blowers are still allowed to be used. They're going to be allowed, there's restrictions coming in twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight. But of course, the Common Council has to vote on that again on those dates in September of twenty twenty six. So just to clear up that confusion. But at this point, all we're doing is making a technical correction to what we originally written as far as safety features for the use of combustible leaf blowers.
Any comments, Mister Jilsky-Eichner?
Miss Shanahan, just to clarify, and what is the date on which the performance effect? August, well, if it passes, it is August one, twenty twenty four. That's as written in the change.
Further comment, Ms. McMur?
So I obviously voted against the leaf blower ban when we brought it up for discussion. I think that some things still hold true. I'm not against the safety measures. I actually think it's probably the best part of this ordinance. I just think that we need to be really clear and communicate directly with the people that any of this is impacting. I think we need to talk to them about educating their workers. So even if they do provide P P E that, you know, they understand the hazards of using any of this equipment. So I think education has always been really important for me for that. I worry about the cost of all of this, for the city, for the landscapers, for the small companies, and I also worry about enforcement. I don't know exactly who's going to be enforcing this, and so I still have concerns about that. So I just wanted to bring that up publicly. Thank you.
Miss Young?
Oh, thank you, Mister Mayor. So Lisa, could you explain the OSHA, eliminating the OSHA? They just didn't have clear regulations, and so D P W was confused about what, you know, what they should be doing. So it felt like if we went to the manufacturing recommended and required, it was very easy to see because the catalog for each of the machines clearly states what they are, what's recommended for safety equipment. So it just was a clear, it felt more clarifying than going to OSHA for each machine. So it's very clear as to what one does. If you buy this machine, they give you a, you know, a catalog. It tells you how to use it and what they require or what the manufacturing recommended.
So they align with what OSHA.
Yes.
Further comment, Miss Smith?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to point out, I was absent for the original vote. I had had a long planned trip to mark a very significant milestone in my life. So I did not wake up
early morning.
I did not wake up at three A M. From Europe to, to call in. But, you know, I do believe very strongly that the leaf blowers need to be banned. I would have been a no vote had I been here, not because I don't think that, you know, they are harming the environment and they are dangerous to the workers, and they certainly are a quality of life issue. I've heard so much of that. But just because, you know, we hear the confusion, right, of, you know, the landscapers who, you know, it's like, what I would have liked to have seen is to take a year or so for that public outreach before moving in this direction. That being said, I think that safety is a really important factor, and so I am going to support this because it seems very reasonable, much more reasonable than, you know, than, you know, what OSHA was, well, because they really didn't have the specifics. So I recognize that there is free will and that some people, even though they are given the information and the landscapers are going to, you know, the owners are going to require it, you know, there is free will, and that's kind of a tricky thing. But we have to do our best to educate the workers about, you know, the dangers of their work. So I do support this.
Further comments or discussion? Mister Seed.
I do support the safety. I think, I think I do have, like, a concern, and I brought it up in committee, of the owners of the businesses being fined for the action of the employee. Because, like, as Smith just said, it's free will, and the employees, the employer can provide this equipment, spend money on these equipment, and the employees can decide not to wear it. I have experienced that in the industry I work in, and that's where I'm just concerned of the burden of putting that on the owners and having them be responsible for the free will that was just mentioned, of the employees to not wear this equipment. And also, like, how are we going to enforce this? Who's going to, like, is neighbors going to be calling, like, the blight officer, blight officer going to be going around looking for this? So I do support the safety of it. I do kind of struggle with the enforcement of it, and then the employers kind of be, I know they are responsible for the employees, but the employees have this free will to use or not use the equipment that we're requiring.
Further comments or discussion? Ms. Dunn?
I want to actually read this so they can get down to it. I don't
I don't want to get into the weeds about leaves, or the leaves, the grass, about this specifically, but I just want to speak specifically to the ordinance. "I want to believe that this ordinance comes from a good place, the desire for all landscape employees to have an excellent quality of life. The goal may be to encourage people to wear PPE for their own good, but that is not what it says. It stipulates that the company is responsible, not the grown adult. Why? Do you believe that they don't deserve self-agency? Are you assuming that they can't read manufacturers manuals themselves? Or are you basing your ordinance on the belief that if you legislate it, they will comply and will magically change their behavior and save lives? It is that, is it that you don't want to place undue burden on the poor workers who can't be held responsible for their own health decisions? Their boss is in a better position to do that? I find this ordinance as written condescending. In Connecticut, an adult can ride a bike without a helmet. Another piece of PPE, it would be foolish for an adult not to wear, but it is not legislated. I suggest in order to make the ordinance more than just a performance exercise that it put the burden on providing PPE, the word is providing, PPE, on the owner of the company. Secondly, the landscape employee will not be carrying around the manual, nor should the city employee tasked with enforcement be expected to magically know what every manufacturer recommends for each and every blower. It's an undue burden on someone, I'm not exactly sure who, but I would like to think it was thought through before being presented for a vote, unless it was never intended to actually be enforced. Who we legislate being cited and for what specifically does matter to me and my constituents. I'm hopeful that we can get beyond the pearl clutching. I know it will be easier to ignore the flaws and rubber stamp this ordinance as it is, but that's not what I'm going to do."
Further comment? Ms. Najulski Eichner?
Very briefly, I think, for some clarification. It is a general principle of law in this country that employers are responsible for actions that their employees take while they are employed by the employer during the employer's business. So it is not unusual that that would be an expectation that there would be some responsibility on the part of the employer for their employees. So I just want to make sure that we're not going too far afield here in terms of, you know, what we're, what we're, what we are putting forward here as being unusual or outside of the general scope of how we approach things in this country.
Further comment, discussion, Ms. Young?
I really relate to what Ms. Smith said. I think there, we could have done this out the gate a little differently, but we're here. But I do think we need to actually listen to and engage at some point, all of, we reach out to all of the landscaper businesses on every level, just to engage them, because we don't want this to be us against them. We all live here. And so we want to make this as easy as possible as a transition for them. We've got a couple of years to do that. But I think we all realize that we really need to do a lot more communication with the folks that are going to be directly impacted by this. And to hopefully tamp down some of this fire and dissension that we have going on, because I don't think that is our intent to ruin anybody or to make this more difficult than it has to be. But as we know, this is a trend moving across the country. And so we can fight it now, and maybe we won't be here when it actually comes to fruition. But I think those are the things that are coming. And rather than be too far behind the eight ball, I think we get ahead of it. We engage the community on every level. We understand where we had some missteps in trying to communicate with folks in their language and on their level and just be more engaging. So I hope that is what we get to, because we've got time to do it. But I think we need to do that, because we all have some valid concerns and points. But we know this is something that's going to happen. So how do we make it happen in the best way with the least amount of tension and resistance on the folks who will be impacted?
Further comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? So we have three abstentions, Mr. Seed, Ms. Ayers, Ms. McMur. We have two opposed, Ms. Dunn and Mr. Wiggins. And everybody else is, I got that right, right? Okay, so there were three abstentions, two opposed. And since we have thirteen people, eight in favor. Ms. Shanahan?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? We are adjourned at eight oh five. Thank you.